Okay. Okay, we will call this November 17th council meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We've got folks out there in the audience ready to speak. I would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of the Mi'kmaq. And let's stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of Alaska man. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
I don't care, I still miss Phil. Okay, record of attendance, and Lindsay has that. So councillor Lesser is not here. Go ahead, deputy. I don't know why that's not working. There it is.
I'd like to make a motion that we excuse councillor Lesser.
Okay.
Seconded.
Second by councillor Dares. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead.
No, when it comes to declarations of conflict of interest, I'd like to declare a conflict on item 12B2. Thank you.
12B2. Thank you. Okay, any other declarations of conflict? And again, you know, you can declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, so approval of the agenda, additions and deletions. So with your permission, I would like to remove 11A, which is the grants budget, and we'll put that on the committee of the whole, and we'll have more information. I would like to add, under additions, ratification of the IAFF collective agreement. If we can add that on there. I can't think that I'm missing anything else. I don't think so. Okay, go ahead councillor Cleveland.
If that's the case, I would like to make a motion for the agenda to be approved with the aforementioned modifications.
Okay, thank you. Second by councillor Hatfield. Am I right? It's hard, either one. Okay, but there was nothing else anybody wanted to add? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Approval of minutes, town council, October 13th. Councillor Hatfield, second by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Special town council, October 13th. Okay, councillor Cleveland, second by deputy mayor. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, October 27th. Councillor Hatfield, second by the other councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Special town council, October 27th. Councillor Cleveland, second by deputy mayor. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, so that brings us to the public hearing section. And I will, I'll explain how this will work. I think most people here understand how this works. What I will do is I will read each one separately. I will ask three times if anyone would like to speak. And if you wish to speak, you would come up to this microphone. It's just on the podium here. You would come up here, give us your name, tell us where you live, and then you can, you can share with us whatever you want. I will also clarify that during a public hearing, I mean, if anybody at the table has questions, that's fine. You can certainly ask the question to the person that's at the podium. But it's not where council discusses the actual motion. It'll come up later in the agenda, which is actually right after this section under business. And then we'll have our discussion and make a decision then. So we don't want anybody to be shy to step up. And at the end, I'll ask if everybody has spoken that would like to speak to that, and we'll move on. So the first one is 9A, Land Use Bylaw Amendments, Boarding or Rooming Houses. And the recommended motion is to approve second reading to the Land Use Bylaw Amendments to allow boarding or rooming houses in all zones that allow dwelling units. So I will also say that our planner is here. And at any time, if you want to come up and share anything or explain, don't be, don't wait for us. Don't wait for us. I know everybody just loves to come to that podium. So, okay, so I will ask the first time, would anyone like to speak to 9A around the rooming and boarding homes? I'll ask the second time, would anyone like to speak to the rooming and boarding homes? Why not?
My name is Mike Dilliness.
Mike Dilliness.
And I'm just curious, on the boarding rooms, is there any assistance to provide these rooms?
Do you want to come up and take that? That's, that's a no. This is just, yeah, this is just to ensure that you can do them in other than certain zones, so you can do them wherever there are dwelling units.
I see, I see. Okay, no, this is a question.
Okay, no, great. Thank you for that. Sorry, Tony, I answered my own question. Okay, so I'll ask one more time around the rooming homes. Would anybody like to speak to this one? Anybody else, I should say? Okay, hearing none, thank you for the question, Mr. Dilliness. Okay, hearing nothing, that will go on to the next part of the agenda. And I will go to 9B, which is Development Agreement and Land Use Bylaw Amendments with a concurrent rezoning. And the recommended motion there is to approve second reading to a development agreement and land use by law amendments for a 24-unit affordable housing development on Shaw Avenue with concurrent rezoning from general commercial Main Street, C2M, to high-density residential, which is R3. And I would just bring it to everybody's, you can see up there. So these folks here are from AHANZ, the Affordable Housing Association of Nova Scotia. Welcome. And because you're on camera, we'll let you speak first. And share, I think you had a little presentation, and that may help some folks in the audience as well with some answers. So let us know who you are, and welcome.
Thank you. We're just gonna set up our little slideshow here. Is everyone able to see the slides?
Yes.
Great.
Awesome. Okay, well, hello. Thanks so much to members of council and town staff for having us here today. My name is Adrian Sallop, and I'm a planner at the Affordable Housing Association of Nova Scotia. I'm joined with my colleague Claudia Yon and our ED, Jim Graham, who is in person at the council meeting in Yarmouth tonight. Molly Maryman and Natalie Leonard are also here from Passive Design Solutions, and they're the architects for the proposed project. And they're also on the call with us. So as outlined in our planning application, AHANZ is proposing a well-designed 24-unit building on the Shaw property. We're working with industry experts to ensure the building is solid and uses quality materials. The project emulates our current project under construction in Dartmouth, which I believe there's renderings of in council with you tonight. Our preliminary plan reflects a mixture of bachelor, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, which is based on what we heard, based on the need from conversations with local service providers, landlords, and staff. We have included tenant amenity space in this inward-facing courtyard, as you can see on the site plan. And right now, we've increased our proposed garden boxes and play area. The project also prioritizes energy efficiency. The building will be net zero, producing as much energy as it consumes. We have tried to maximize density on the site to improve viability for the project while providing as much housing as we can to address the urgent need in Yarmouth. We believe we are, we believe our proposed design conforms with neighborhood fabric and design, and is reasonable, and has a reasonable height given the surrounding buildings. The proposed site plan incorporates two options for onsite parking we believe are suitable for the site while maintaining density and tenant amenity space, which Molly will speak to in a few minutes. Affordability for the project, including rent levels and amount of affordable units, will be determined by the most suitable government funding program for the project. Funding eligibility can only be determined once the design for the project is further along and we can begin discussions with lenders. AHANZ's current housing portfolio is well-managed, and we take care in maintaining our properties. We aspire to provide excellent service to our tenants and surrounding community. It is critical for the viability of the building that we develop a sustainable project performer that would allow for a reasonable operation, for a responsible operational budget, including local property manager and property maintenance, and regular contributions to our replacement reserve. Examples of funding programs we're most familiar with and have access to previous projects include initiatives under the National Housing Strategy, CMHC, and Housing Nova Scotia. As illustrated in the table on the screen, most programs have different ways of determining affordability, which would affect the number of affordable units and viability of the project. I'll now pass it on to Molly to discuss onsite parking options.
All right, thanks, Andrea. Since our last presentation at the planning committee hearing back in October, we've worked to address community concerns that we heard relating to parking. So we've developed two options to provide some designated onsite parking as part of the development. Both of these options preserve the original courtyard amenity space and use the right-of-way between the property line and the street for designated tenant spaces that would be maintained solely by AHANZ. So the first parking option includes eight parallel parking spaces, this is the one we're looking at now, within the right-of-way. And among these eight spaces are two designated accessible spaces that are located right beside the entrances to the two ground-floor barrier-free units. And this option allows for a mix of both paved and landscaped area within the right-of-way. And parking option two includes 12 angled parking spaces within the right-of-way that also encroach onto the front yard of the property, since they're a little bit deeper. So like option one, there are also two accessible spaces provided. And this option, as you can see, provides more parking, but does eliminate the opportunity for a landscaped buffer between the parking spaces and walkways. So just to give a little bit of context, we wanted to just present sort of an overview of the street to address some of the concerns that we've been hearing about the lack of parking availability. So this slide shows that if street parking were permitted on the north side of Shaw, which is, you see in the orange rectangles there, there would be space for approximately 17 additional parking spaces within 200-foot distance of the dwelling entrances. So parking on one side of Shaw would leave a clear street width of approximately 17 foot six, which is sufficient for emergency vehicles and snowplows. We also heard some concerns about where folks would park overnight during the winter parking ban. So we highlighted some adjacent surface parking lots in blue that could potentially be used during the ban period. And unlike the adjacent Mermaid Hotel, which would see its parking spaces occupied overnight, since people are there to stay overnight, the Kojiko and the Brunswick Lanes parking lots, on the other hand, would typically be vacant between the hours of 1:00 AM and 7:00 AM. And so we're proposing that there could be arrangements made to allow tenants to use these lots during ban hours only. And now zooming out a little bit further, one of the reasons why we really believe this development makes sense here is because of its central location in Yarmouth and access to key amenities like drugstores, supermarkets, and other basic suppliers like Walmart and Kent. So you can see in this slide that all of the above amenities are within 20 minutes walking distance, with both drugstores and supermarkets within less than a 10-minute walk from the site. This creates an opportunity for folks to live someplace where a car is not essential for day-to-day living. We recognize that not everyone can live car-free, of course, depending on their work and family responsibilities. But for seniors and students who may not drive or have access to a car, the site makes car-free living a possibility for those folks. And finally, why reduce parking? For us, it really comes down to the impact on housing affordability. So this is just a quote from Todd Littman, who's a Canadian transportation expert, from one of his recent publications. So it reads, "Conventional parking minimums significantly increase housing costs, especially when land prices are high and housing construction costs are relatively low, such as affordable urban infill housing. Based on typical affordable urban housing development costs, one parking space per unit increases total development costs by about 12 and a half percent." So essentially, in summary, by reducing the amount of onsite parking, we can house more people. Thank you.
Good. Okay, any questions for these folks from council? Are you hanging, are you gonna hang around for the next part? Yes. No, not you. No. Oh, I'm looking, I got a screen in front, I got a screen down here in front of me. So, okay, so they'll be here if we have questions for them. Okay, so on this same issue, I'm going to ask three times. And if anybody wants to speak, same thing, tell us your name and where you live. So would anybody like to speak to this one? Okay, so, okay, so Brian's gonna come, and then, is that Stephen behind the mask? Okay, good.
My name is Brian Rodney, and I'm representing Best Western Mermaid, or Mermaid Motown Enterprises. I have, I'm not sure if I speak now or later, but I don't want to miss the opportunity if that's the case. I have sent a letter outlining, I hope all the councillors have received that. It's in your packet.
Yeah, yeah.
It was supposed to be, I brought it in Thursday.
Yeah, no, we've got it.
Wade was just shaking his head.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Did you, have you got the letter? Do you want me to read it?
Well, perhaps if you would, yes.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, so it is from Best Western, November 8, 2022, to the town of Yarmouth regarding this planning process. "Please accept this letter as notice that I wish to attend the public meeting on 17th and speak to the points in this letter if asked. Issues of concern to me are: density of proposed rental units on Shaw Avenue to parking spaces allotted to the project; Yarmouth is not an urban area, and there is only one bus in Yarmouth; many of these tenants will have cars; overflow tenant cars will likely be parking in the Best Western Mermaid parking lot; Mermaid was required to have 45 parking spaces, 45 hotel rooms, and extra spaces for staff; this project will have less than 24 parking spaces for 24 rentals; example, many people using the food bank on Herbert Street in Yarmouth use both sides of Herbert Street for parking, which causes traffic congestion; and also use the private parking lot at the Capri Annex; number two, emergency vehicles and snowplows will be hampered when called to Shaw Avenue if minimum parking is proposed, or if parking will be on both sides of the street; number three, local administration for the complex, whom shall we call if tenants are parking in the Best Western Mermaid parking lot; more affordable housing is needed in Yarmouth, but the proposed project of 24 units is too big for the Shaw Avenue site. Thank you for your attention. Brian Rodney, president."
Thank you. I just want to make sure I've got the information that's going on further, and I might not have a chance to speak to it, that's all.
Yeah, and it is on, it is on record, Mr. Rodney. It's on record, because we have it attached to the files. But if you wanted to share anything else around that, because this is the last opportunity to talk.
So I won't be able to talk later on?
Nope.
Okay. I do have some questions in there, and I see that they're here. Are they able to hear me talking?
I think so. And if they can't hear you, I can pass on the question. So to AHANZ, we have, we have a gentleman here that may have some questions. Are you okay with that? Oh, you're good. Oh, gosh, didn't see you back there. Okay? All right.
No, I'm trying to raise a point. Now, I'm all for progress, but I feel that this is not looking at the things in the community. We have one bus, as I pointed out. It's not a flat piece of land, which is nice when you look at the plan. And there's a hill to it, and I'm at the bottom of the hill. We have parking, we're required to put 45 units, 10 plus, as I pointed out in the letter. And I really can't understand why we just throw that out with a few parkings on the street, that street parking. I understand the presentation is put to the planning advisory. There was questions asked about this, and I can't understand what was said here tonight. I don't know how many more parking, you're talking about street parking. That is one issue. I have mine, which is private parking. I want to be a good neighbor, but I'm thinking of being forced to be in a situation, and I don't know who's going to be onsite. There's just a number of things that are in motion here, and it's like the train has left the station, and what I'm saying is just going to be ignored. But please keep that in mind, or put conditions in. They have a period of time for two or three years, some period of time that they do this. If they don't, it reverts back, because if we get pieces in there that don't have parking, that's one reason why I sold the property, because I couldn't do anything with it myself. Now you're saying nobody has to have the parking, they can use the street and everything. Times are changing, I understand that. But I just don't want, when they can't park there, I have 45 parking lots, and especially in the off-season, I'm trying to plow the parking lot, and I don't want to be the responsibility of a policeman. It's not good, I have to put signs up, no parking, it doesn't look friendly. I'm trying to promote tourism. None of this comes together in comparison to the advantages of operating or having a property next door. I've tried to work with the others, and I've even had them use the pool. I let people come in and go use the pool, and then it got, well, I didn't have a chance, I was away, or something else, and I've inundated. I could go to the tenancy organization that you have, which is being downsized, they moved to Halifax, and they worked with me, and we worked through those problems. What I'm having now, I don't know who's going to be there, and I would like to be able to work through any of the problems that we have. But I really feel this piece of land is going to have three, four units on it, as outlined. It looks nice on paper, it's great, there's no trainees. I know you say you're going to address it. There's nothing formal, there's nothing put to the planning board. It's being pushed through, but I thought the planning board should have, I don't think they're answered. Their questions have been answered, that I'm understanding. And I think it needs to be. Some of it is being addressed, but there not being answered. And if it gets on, you're going to give the land, we're giving the land away, we're giving the conditions on it, that nobody has to have any parking if they do something there. And it needs to have a time limit, a reasonable one, in a couple, two or three years. And I know there's some agreements in there, but I have not seen them, nor am I able to see them, because it's going to be afterwards that I'll be able to see it. So I'm just trying to bring this to your attention. There's a lot of unanswered questions that need to be addressed. I'm not trying to be blocked, just have addressed with your, your planning committee, your boards, so that they can get the information, pass it back to you. Because I understood, and I think they understood, it was being brought down to the last meeting, and then all of a sudden, there was a motion that the land was going to be given to the proposed developers. Well, did I miss that opportunity? And I don't want to miss this one, for everybody to look at it. And if that's the way it is, then that's the way it is. But I don't feel, your structure is, you're trying to fast-track it, and I understand that, there's a need for that, but not to the point of just letting everything go, and you say, well, how can we change it if we've taken a little bit more time, heard from our planning advisory board what we should be doing? Is this a good project? The question hasn't been answered by the board. Maybe it doesn't operate that way, but I think that's what they're there for. They're very qualified, and they haven't given you a recommendation on this proposal. This came out last Wednesday in the Vanguard, and now it's, we're at a meeting, and who's had a chance to look at it? It's just being moved along. So I hope my points are made. I was hoping I could ask it here. I see, do you have somebody back here? Then, fine, that's it? Do you have any questions to me at this point?
Any questions?
I have orders asking that. These are the things I don't know, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank, thank you for that, Mr. Rodney. So one of, one of the questions is, who's going to be onsite? There's going to be, and from, I understand from the presentation that there is somebody onsite, like a property manager, correct? Did you want to come up and? You can tell us your name, and, I mean, I know who you are. Jim, hi, Jim.
My name is Jim Graham, and I am the executive director of the Affordable Housing Association of Nova Scotia, and I live in Dartmouth.
Okay.
Property management for the, for this project will be in Yarmouth. The question, to answer the question, out of 24 units, it's very, very likely there will be somebody in that building that has a role of what I would say is building site superintendent, along those lines. The full property management around tenant selection, rent collection, and those kinds of things will be, will engage whoever's very good at that locally. So it's kind of, kind of have both parts of that here in terms of someone onsite that's responsible for the site and things that happen on the site, and a property manager to supervise that, and look after the, I would say, the business of the 24 units.
Okay.
That's the working point.
Okay, so, so the, Mr. Rodney, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think you're also asking, you just want assurances that your business isn't going to be overflow parking? That's, that's, I mean, it's his property, and we're just like, who is responsible for that? Is that somebody onsite, or is that?
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming Mr. Rodney will post his parking lot that says this parking is for staff and guests of the premises, and that other parking is prohibited. I then would suspect that if his staff can identify cars that aren't supposed to be there, that could be anybody's car. It would be logical to assume that there'll be a relationship at the beginning, I'm guessing, between Mr. Rodney's staff and whoever's in the building as building superintendent.
Yeah.
I think that, that's a conversation that can move to resolve the situation. Either, I'm sorry, Mr. Rodney, I have no idea who owns that car, it's nobody in this building, or it is somebody, and we'll have it stopped. Part of the, part of the process for ourselves in terms of renting the building is figuring out whether the spots that we have, the eight spots or 12, or whatever it is, is that a free-for-all? Do we assign those spots to six? Who are they to? Who else in the building has a car? There's ways in which we can set that up. So if we have a situation that has to be mitigated, we, A, know, we know who we have to deal with, both from Mr. Rodney's side, because it won't be him, it'll be somebody there. And on our side, it won't be me, somebody in the building.
Okay. Does that, is that helpful? And the, and the other, the other part is the conversation, like you were saying, the proactive piece, where whoever's in that building has a conversation with everybody that moves in and just says, this is your parking. It's not, we don't park in the.
I think it's very clear this is potentially an issue. So the way to make sure that it's proper. So the way to make sure that it's properly dealt with is understand this is potential, and put things in place at the beginning.
Absolutely.
That will resolve those situations if and when they arise, that's what I would say.
Good, okay, thank you.
Is there allocated parking? Like, you have 24 units, how many, how much parking do you need?
I don't know how many you need. I mean, somebody would say 24, but what we used to do, and it was, it's part of what, what Mr. Rodney was saying, it's sort of like, I don't want to say Canadian Tire. Like, we used to say to, something like Canadian Tire or the mall, if you're going to have this many stores, this much square footage, you have to have this much parking space.
Right.
But, but we don't, Tony, you correct me if I'm wrong, we're not doing that anymore, because we can't, yeah, sure, and if you turn that light on, it's Jeff's light, so it'll, it'll just go on.
Very, very, like, important question, you know, because it used to be at one point to.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not anymore, because we can't, if, if you can't, I'm just going to be blunt about it, if people are not going to your store at the mall or Canadian Tire because you don't have enough parking spots, that's, that's not up to us. And, and that's not up to us to tell you how to run your business. And, and it's also not up to us to, we have to make sure there's, I mean, obviously, there's, there's room for parking, or there's some conversation around it. But if I have a car and there's no parking space, I can't live there. It's, it's, go ahead, Tony, you might be able to explain it better than I can.
So part of the amendments, as part of this proposal, is to remove minimum parking requirements through projects that proceed by development agreements, which is what this project is doing. And the reason for that, as Molly mentioned in the presentation, is we can maximize the density on the site by removing minimum parking requirements. Adding, having, requiring 24 parking spots for 24 units increases the cost. On the site, potentially would take away the number of units. So fundamentally, it is a choice between addressing the housing crisis and necessarily having parking. Also, the assumption that every tenant is going to have a car is probably not necessarily accurate. Having said that, we did hear clearly at Planning Committee that there is concerns about the no-on-site parking. So the two options that are presented, that Molly went through, and there's maps of them there, were developed in discussions between A. Hands and town staff, including public works and engineering. So when we talk about the street right-of-way, we're not talking about the paved portion of the street. The town-owned right-of-way is actually wider than what is the actual paved street. So the, both parking options up there, and the maps, are within the right-of-way, but they're not the existing paved portion of the street. So it's within the town-owned land, so the actual width of the street is not going, like, we're not taking away anything from the width of the street, which is why Molly said there is still room for additional on-street designated parking that would not impede emergency vehicles. It would not impede snowplows, anything like that. But during winter season, they would not be able to overnight park, because snowplows need to be able to move the snow somewhere. So there are options for the town to solve the parking problem or issue. And the two options proposed here are what we can get on-site to address at least some designated parking. And as Jim mentioned, A. Hands can decide the best approach, whether it's a free-for-all for tenants, or whether it's assigned spots, once they know whether tenants have cars. But essentially, the nature of the project, the 20, the 24 units, is addressing a significant housing need in the town, and any sort of future parking issues, the town can work with the property manager to address. And I just, Brian, on your comments in terms of process, the Planning Committee meeting was kind of that first opportunity. We have responded in terms of the comments that were brought up that, there, to have a solution. This is the public hearing, where is an opportunity for anyone else to bring up any issues associated with the project. And then there is still, assuming if everything goes forward tonight, the legislation does create, there would be notices of approval that would go in the paper, and then there's a process associated with that. So there are multiple steps where input is permitted, and this is one of those steps, so.
Good, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Sorry, Tony Morris, I'm the planner for the town. The planner.
Tony Morris.
Morris, yes.
Oh, come on up, Mr. Solos.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Stephen Solos, and I don't live in the town. I do a lot of volunteer work for various charities within the town, and I'm here tonight, sorry, I'm here tonight as a volunteer with Yarmouth Environmental Think Tank. Actually, only just noticed this project probably two weeks ago. But there were a number of positive things that we saw about it, and Yarmouth Environmental Think Tank is in support of the project. We do understand there's issues to work out, as there always is in these kinds of projects, but I just wanted to quickly touch base on a few things that we see as very positive for the town and very encouraging. The fact that it's probably going to be, if it goes ahead, the first net-zero housing project, particularly a high-density housing project in Yarmouth, is a huge positive thing for this town, we feel. These sorts of projects are becoming more and more necessary as we battle our greenhouse gas emissions and try to make the planet livable. And I think this is a very important aspect that we all have to be cognizant of, and realize that we have to be looking at more of these types of projects. With the net zero, of course, the efficiency and energy savings that the project will have for folks living there will be, you know, a great benefit as well, as they have, you know, lower power bills, and therefore, less cost of living towards them for using the units. I also think it'll be a showcase for the town, and there are many small towns in Nova Scotia that have to get on this ride as well, to build this type of, of housing in the province, so that we are all doing our part, and this is one big way that I think Yarmouth can do its part in trying to protect the environment. The other aspect of it, of course, is the fact that it's going to help reduce what we'd call urban sprawl, and that in itself helps reduce our emissions immensely. If we can find these hub-centered housing units close to, you know, the necessities of life, it avoids things like people needing cars and that type of transportation. And so that can be another plus, and I think Tony mentioned that fact, that a number of these people will not have cars in any case. The other, the other issue with it as well, where you have a great social mix of people in the housing units. I have had personal experience with those types of projects in my own neighborhood. Twenty-five years ago, the problems opened up some housing in the municipality of Yarmouth. I must tell you, initially, when I found out that two were going to be built across the road from me, I was a bit skeptical. It has been a learning experience, but it has been a great growth in our neighborhood to be able to rub shoulders with people with different social backgrounds, and it's been a positive benefit for all of us who have been there, both the people who moved into the housing and us in the neighborhood, and that's been a huge plus. So the neighborhood I see is being, you know, the other thing is, this builds its own neighborhood because of the fact it is relatively high-density. The other issue is looking at things like, you know, the parking for bicycles, and the, and the possibility of having a community garden structure built into that. All benefits community. I'm involved with a significant project at Beacon United Church. We have got 179, I think, community garden plots. We have, once again, in the social fabric of our town, everyone and anyone that you can imagine that are participating in that garden, and it becomes a melting pot for the community when you can have those types of projects. Of course, the other huge benefit of that is we're, you know, we're growing our own vegetables there as a community, sharing in the proceeds, reducing the costs, the people that are living there, and providing a high-quality food. The one at Beacon is, it's a pretty good green project, I would say. We use, actually, local compost and that sort of thing, which helps in the project as well. So I guess really that's about all I have to say, but, but I do see this whole project as being a very positive aspect for the town to take on, and it's exciting and encouraging for us, at least in yet, and other environmentalists, to see this kind of a project come to town. And I hope we recognize the benefits of it, and that you are successful with it. I realize there will be glitches, as Mr. Rodney had indicated. Hopefully, all those things can be worked out, but I think on a project of this size, we also have to expect that there's going to be things to work out, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if someone else would like to come up and speak?
I'm Margaret Robinson, excuse me. I live right here in Yarmouth, close by to Shaw Avenue, and I just want to say I want to give my wholehearted approval of, of the project, the way it's been described, as far as I understand. It's definitely needed. It's in, it's in a sensible place, and on top of it, that it's going to be a net-zero building, I find that's really exemplary, and I really want to hope it's going to happen. The only thing that I would like to add is, can we have a secure space for bicycles in there as well? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. One up, Ginny.
My name is Ginny Smith, and I know many of you in my avocational and professional roles in Yarmouth. And I live quite far from Yarmouth, so why the heck do I care? I do. And I respect your concerns about parking, Mr. Rodney. But probably 10 years ago, I wrote to Carolyn Robinson, your town planner at the time, suggesting that Yarmouth needed some kind of a, a project to demonstrate what net, a net-zero living arrangement could be, or business. And, and then, of course, things changed for her, and I'm so pleased that you now have a town planner that is interested in possibly having a net-zero project. I think that's, would be a great project for, for Yarmouth and the area. And I would be a cheerleader for it, even though I live out in the Boondocks, and I can't even say that I don't drive my car in, because I do. And if I could ride my bicycle in, I would too, but I can't do that, because I just went through a snowstorm to get here today. But I do care, and I think it's great that you would consider it, and more power to you. I hope it works, and I hope the parking situation can work out, Mr. Rodney, because I wouldn't want you to lose business. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Ginny, you know we just put in bike lanes, and we're just getting started. So you can drive to the end of Parade Street. Actually, you can get out to the, maybe the hard-scratch corner, and then you can, you can get in. In our garage.
I just want to say something about that. I worked all summer to get a person in the community to be trained as a level-five CAN Bike Certified Teacher, or it's not. And we have one in the area, and he will represent all municipal areas. And his name is Jonathan Young, and he's quite qualified, and he will be ready and willing in the spring, or possibly before that, to, to run clinics, and he's very, very capable, and that too is something that your town planner was in support of. So anyway, enough from me.
Yeah, our, our planner's pretty cool. Okay, would anybody else like to speak to this? I'm going to ask two more times, because I lost track. Anyone else like to speak to this one? And would anyone else like to speak to this one? Okay, hearing no one, this one moves, moves down too, and we're actually at that point, I believe. So that concludes the public hearing. I want to just say, very sincere on behalf of everyone, a really sincere thank you for everybody that came in and shared concerns and positives and negatives. We can't make decisions without everything on the table. And I can tell you, sitting in these seats, there's nothing better than when people come forward and, and start to share, because it's, it doesn't happen with everything. So this, this is an important one. So we're on to 10A with the, under the business arising, and that, again, is what we just discussed under 9A, Land Use Bylaw Amendments, Boarding or Rooming Houses. And the recommended motion, again, is that council approves second reading to the Land Use Bylaw Amendments to allow boarding or rooming houses in all zones that allow dwelling units. So I'm, go ahead there, Councilor Cleveland.
Well, I'd just like to say that that's, this, this amendment to the LUB is, is another one of those opportunities that allows us to, in some small way at least, address the crisis that we're dealing with as far as housing, and I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Dares. Is there any discussion on this one? Any questions, concerns, anything on the house, on the, this one is, is the boarding and rooming houses. Go ahead, Councilor Hatfield.
Hi, thank you. I'm just wondering if the planner, or perhaps Councilor Cleveland, as Chair of the Planning Committee, can just speak to how this came about, this, this change? I mean, I'm in favor for it, but I would just like to know the kind of the history of how, how that kind of arose for the change.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, wait, okay. So the Midtown, the owner of the Midtown Motel is actually the applicant that approached. Basically, so the Midtown Motel is kind of currently being used for both purposes, as short-term rentals and long-term rentals. The house at the Midtown Motel is not being used, so there's 10 rooms in there that basically they're hoping to be able to use for student housing. But it would need to meet the definition of boarding a rooming house. So it was kind of an opportunity to see where boarding roomhouses are currently allowed, and, well, why, why not allow them in anywhere that has dwelling units? So that's kind of how it arose. It was specific to that property, but town staff feel as though, again, like, in terms of things that the town can do to address some of the housing issues, is just as a right, allow these where there are, in any of the zones that allow dwelling units.
I want the public to know that this is how, where it arose from, and that it is a move in the right direction.
Thank you. I think sometimes what, what happens is, you can't, you can't foresee every opportunity or everything that's going to come up, and so when one thing comes up, I mean, we know how it works as a council, when something comes up and we make a decision, it covers everything, right? Like, even though it's specific to one building, the request or the thought, or, or, you know, the change in policy comes, or bylaw comes along, it covers everything in the town, in most cases. So, you know, it's, it's almost like we get excited, because good, this is a good change we should have done a long time ago, but you can't possibly change everything. So is there any more comments or questions, concerns, anything on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, and then the, the second one, and this is where we had all the speakers. 10B, the Development Agreement and Land Use Bylaw Amendments with concurrent rezoning. The council approves second reading to a Development Agreement and Land Use Bylaw Amendments for 24-unit affordable housing development on Shaw Avenue with concurrent rezoning from general commercial Main Street, C2M, to high-density residential R3. So I'm looking for that motion on the floor, too, okay? Deputy Mayor? Okay, Deputy Mayor? We'll have a discussion. Seconded by Counselor Baugh. Okay, so discussion on this one. Go ahead, Deputy.
Well, first of all, I'm thankful for everyone who spoke today. As the Mayor said earlier, often these things go through, and we have no one come, so it's nice to hear opinions regardless of what they are. And thank you for Tony for clarification on this. I guess for me, anytime we see housing, it's obviously something that's needed, not just in our town, but all over the province, so, you know, we're kind of gung ho there. I'm thankful that Mr. Rodney came in to address his concerns, and I think, when we weigh things out sometimes, I think when people need somewhere to live, and a possible parking issue, I think the parking issue could very easily be fixed up, as opposed to where someone doesn't have someone, somewhere to live, it isn't that easy. So for me, just looking at this, to think that we could have a 24-unit Affordable Housing Development here within a few years, and help our citizens, it's something that would be very hard for me not to support. Very thankful to hear, thankful for Mr. Solos to be here to talk about the net zero and the impact on the environment as well. So I'm happy this is here, and I will be supporting it. And as well, I'd like to say to Mr. Rodney, if anything comes down the tube along the way, through the process, and you'd like to reach out to any of us for that matter, I want you to know that your concerns are important to us as well. So thank you for speaking tonight.
Thank you. Deputy Counselor Dairs?
Thank you. To begin with, I just think this is an amazing proposal, and to develop a net zero affordable housing units with 24 units in town is something that we can only dream about. I do share the concerns regarding parking. Just last evening, I drove by the Cohen Apartments on Pleasant Street, and although they're not designated affordable, I think they're within that range. And I think there's probably three cars for every four units, at least, parked in front of that. So I really am concerned about this. I don't see the north side of Shaw Avenue being designated parking being a feasible solution. Number one, how do you control that with people parking on the street? Number two, how do you manage that through the winter months when there's a parking van? So I think that's sort of outside of the realm of reality, really. And I'm really concerned about the fact that there's not enough parking. I appreciate that, you know, some people won't have cars, but to tell somebody, "You can't live here because you have a car," seems a little bit contrived, indicated to me. I mean, if you've got a part-time job in John's Cove, and you have to go to work at midnight, we're telling you, "You have to cycle out there"? I don't know, that you can't have a car? It's a difficult one for me. I really want to support this project, I really do. I think it's a great project, but I still wonder if we've explored all the options regarding parking. And I know that community gardens are important, but there's one in Beacon, you know, two blocks away. Could the community garden plots that are in that plan be converted to onsite parking? You know, is that an option? I just wish that we could find another solution that would benefit both, well, the parking will benefit the tenants. I mean, it's not just to benefit Mr. Rodney, it's not just to benefit the people that use Shaw Avenue, but it's to benefit the tenants. And I really think we should be exploring any options, onsite options that we can. I will be supporting the proposal, but I really, with the caution that, I believe we should be pushing back a little bit with the developer, and asking if there's any other way we could configure this proposal to allow for additional onsite parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hatfield?
Thank you. Yeah, I am in agreeance with Counselor Dairs on this. I just feel that creating only 12 parking spaces for our 24-unit is creating chaos for that street, and probably particularly for Mr. Rodney, and he does not want to be or need to be a parking police in his parking lot, and that's really what he will become if this goes through as this. And then suggesting that perhaps they park in the Bowling Alley parking lot, or in the East Link parking lot, again, is just creating parking police for those people, and it just becomes very convoluted. You know, these people, although there's only, you know, they may not have vehicles, but they may have visitors coming, and they will have vehicles, you know? There will be people stopping in. So now people perhaps won't stop in and visit these people, because there is no parking for them. So how do we work, how do we do that? You know, that comes down to quality of life for somebody. I think I look at the development plan, and I look at the gardening containers, I look at the, I think it's a play area, or something that's there, you know, could those be made into parking spaces? And I know it adds to the cost, but I think we need to do it, and we need to do it right, and not create chaos on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Baugh?
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, not an easy decision, I mean, not an easy, you know, challenge, because the question is, are we planning for today, or are we planning for the future? And the future tells us that we will not be car owners. We will be required to make drastic changes if we are going to survive on this planet for another 150 years. And so I'm left with the utopian ideal, and the stark reality, which was, which has already been described by both Counselors Dare and Counselor Hatfield, and which I brought up myself at the planning meeting. But I am supporting the motion, and I'm supporting it because I think we have to look to the future, and recognize that unless we make change, change won't happen. So I'm delighted with the project. I think it is an opportunity for this community. I am concerned about some of the challenges that might come along with that, because I do know where we are today. But I hope that this will create an opportunity to nudge this community forward. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I just wrote some notes down, because when people are speaking, I'm always, did you want to, you had something else to?
I just wanted to make an observation, Your Worship, with regards to the public hearing. And I heard at least two individuals comment tonight about notice, and about not knowing that this was coming up until very, you know, it crept up on them very quickly. And I just want to make note of that, so that we can absorb that reality into our processes and our planning as we go forward. I know that there's some changes coming to the Municipal Governments Act about how we provide notice to people, and I just think that we need to take note of that, because that's, our intention is to be transparent, and our intention is to be inclusive and to engage our community. So if we're not doing that, it's really important, I think, that we hear them, and try to find a way of ensuring that their needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you. And what she is saying is, we are bound by ways that we are supposed, like, we have to keep sending it out in the newspaper, and then we think, like, how many people are reading the newspaper, or buying the newspaper? But it is also, it's on our social media, it's on our website, it's on Facebook, like, it's well-advertised. The problem is, we can't, we don't know what's important to each of, I mean, we have people here from outside of town, quite a distance, for Ginny, you know, outside of town, like, we can't ask 25,000 people, "Make sure you check." It's a hard one. So I think with the changes in the MGA, that maybe there's better ways that we can get it out, but I think we're doing, like, we're doing everything we can, and we do, it does come through Planning Advisory, it's on all the agendas, it's a tough one. So I, oh, sorry, I'll do mine after you.
No, no, that's okay. I just, I'm just wondering if this would be an appropriate place to use the Alertable?
Do we use this, do we use Alertable for this night?
Do we use that for public meetings?
It's on Alertable, too. Yeah.
It is? Okay. Right, thank you.
I'll just say...
Alertable is, it's an app that, it just comes through your...
Do you watch these proceedings?
What's it, no, it's an app that tells you what's coming up. Yeah. And it comes right to your phone. But it's not just what comes up, it's if there's an emergency, snow removal, like, anything that's important will come up on there, and you'll get a little notice right across your phone. So you just have to sign up, go on our website, I think, actually, if you go on the website, that's the first thing that pops up. How to sign up for Alertable.
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 Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's something everybody should be signed up for, because it just gives you so much information. Go ahead, Dairs, Counselor.
Thanks. I just wanted to, just to clarify, so if this passes tonight, it's the rezoning that we're voting, we're actually voting on, and then there'll be time to go back and look at the development plan? Is that right?
It's the Development Agreement, and change to the Land Use Bylaw Amendments. So her question that we have, go ahead and ask the Planner.
So it's Land Use Bylaw Amendments and Development Agreement. The Development Agreement enables the concurrent rezoning. So it's, you're voting on the package?
On the development that's being presented to us with the 12 parking?
Having said that, we have the two options proposed for parking, so there could be a motion specifically on which option. But I can also, if you want me to.
Yeah, because I was going to ask you a couple times, please speak to that again.
First, also, on the process of notifications, in this case, because it's a Development Agreement, property owners within 30 meters also got mailouts. And then the other thing I encourage people to do is, the town's website, there's something also called Get Involved, where we post all of our projects and planning applications, and you can register to get notifications that way, as well. Just plugging that. On the parking, so Town Staff, myself, Engineering and Public Works had extensive conversations, as well as with A Hands. And the two options within the right-of-way we presented be basically what we could put onsite in that area, without taking away the community amenities. And I feel like with A Hands, the type of development they're trying to do, and the community amenities they're proposing, I agree, from a planning perspective, I wouldn't want to take away from those community amenities, to have it just be parking. In terms of Shaw Avenue itself, one of the discussions we had with the Traffic Authority and Public Works, is Shaw Avenue only runs between Brunswick and Maine. It's a very short street. There's not much on it. The Bowling Alley has access from Brunswick, Motel has access from Maine. So in terms of having designated on-street parking on the north side, there isn't a concern from a traffic flow, and like Molly said, the street is actually so wide enough for, even with that designated parking, for emergency vehicles, for snow removal. The only issue would be during overnight parking, during potential winter maintenance. So that is something that, you know, people would be aware of, that they would not be able to park overnight, so they would have to make other arrangements. Having said that, also, people going to rent here would know there is limited designated parking for that. So people that are looking for housing, or in precarious situations, that don't have cars, would jump at it, because it doesn't matter to them. There's no parking, or there's limited parking. So it is those sorts of enabling policies, why from planning, kind of, not just in big cities, it's happening in small towns, too. Municipalities are moving away from minimum parking requirements, because it just, there's a lot, there's a lot of positive benefits to doing it. So it really does create a situation where people kind of think, "Oh, maybe I don't need a vehicle." So I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
No, I'm glad you, I heard you say it the first time, I just, but I'm glad you said it again, because it's really helpful. So I just jotted down some notes, since everybody else kind of shared theirs. Mr. Rodney, with, like, I mean, we've all said it, we've heard what you said, we respect what you said, and we understand the difficulties. I think from my perspective, it's not, I guess I'm the blunt mayor, but it's not their property. People can't just park on private property. But I also, I also strongly and firmly believe, I'll say this first, I believe in tourism, I believe in our small businesses, that they are tremendously important, and we need to support them and make sure they're okay. And having said that, I think that there is a way to make this happen, without you having to worry at all about the concerns that you have. While at the same time, I respect why you have them, that there has to be a way. And I'll start by saying, I believe that, because of who we are as a community, but because A Hands are experts. They're not just experts, they're just friggin' good, they're really good at what they do. They have to be careful, because every community they go into, you know, people are watching very carefully. How are you doing this in Community A compared to Community B? I'm a mayor that talks to other mayors, including Halifax's mayor, on a regular basis, smaller communities, and everything about A Hands is, I don't want to say above board, it's obviously above board, but it's all positive, because the issues that come up, they listen, and they make sure that everything falls in place in the best manner possible. The fact that this is net zero just gives me goosebumps. I don't know, I mean, I always say it, my son's a PhD environmentalist, I think he's that way, he's that smart, because Ginny taught him how to swim. Just kidding. But he, like, this is the stuff that he talks about every day to me, these types of things, the net zero and all those pieces. The community garden, I would, while I respect what my colleagues are saying, I just, we are trying to create a community, and we're doing such a good job. When I say "we," I mean the community's doing it for us. You know, the Beacon Community Garden. And I don't, there is nowhere in my world that I could ever say there can be too many or too much community gardens. I couldn't even go there, because we're trying to, we're trying to teach people to fish, right? Instead of giving them the fish. So fresh vegetables, and the ability to get outdoors, and do that type of thing, and it's at your fingertips. We're also, as a community, building on the things that we didn't have for a long time, which are amenities. And when I look at, it's not just the drawings, but when I study it, and I look at all the arrows, the amenities, including like what Margaret is asking, you know, that if people can't have vehicles, if everybody can have a vehicle, then certainly there has to be space for bicycles and things like that. So that really gets me excited, too, because like Dell said, we need, we need, our job is to make decisions today while thinking to the future. And the future is not all vehicles, it's simply not. And that, in my perspective, again, is, you know, seconded by the fact that we just, we just put bike lanes, and we just spent millions of dollars, thankfully the government helped us, on active transportation trails, that are trying to get people from, I got goosebumps on my goosebumps, from one end of town to the other, and to be able to circle it without vehicles, that you can get on your bike, and you can walk, and you can push your stroller with you. That you can get on your bike and you can walk and you can push your stroller with your baby. Like, these are the things that, that we're trying to create. And you know, what, what, what Tony said, I'm trying to remember what everybody said, but what, what Tony said about, you know, it's, at, at the outset, because of how we've always done things for history and, you know, our whole lives, and, and I'm talking about council, too, that we've always said, you've got to have this many parking spaces for this many. But, but if that's not the future, then, then we have to plan for that. And I love that, that I, and I do, I believe this sitting here, that those people that don't have vehicles are going to say, oh, my gosh, this is the place for me. I, I don't have to, I can live in a really nice space that's close to everything. I can walk to the store. I can still bicycle to places. I'll say this and I, I don't, it might be, it might come out wrong, but, um, but when I say if you, if you don't have a vehicle, you know, maybe that's not the place for you to live. I, I don't mean that with any disrespect to anybody or, or anything. Because I guess I'm thinking that, you know what? If, if I, um, if I can't walk up two sets of stairs, I can't live in a second floor apartment. Like, I don't, I don't have the luxury of, of saying you have to put in a, I guess now we have to because of accessibility and stuff. But we just have to think, we can't fix everything for everybody, but we can, we can fix our, we can fix our future. I, I, I'm a big fan of, not that we can't do something, it's how do you make it happen in the best way possible? And I would, I would also say, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say this. Housing is tremendously important. And I can only speak for me, but I would never make a big decision like this based on the fact that we need housing. And I wanna, I wanna make that clear. Because, you know what? In 10 years, we're still gonna have those buildings, but we might not need so much housing. So you make it because it's the right thing to do. Your, your, I, I mean, the amenities, it really is its own neighborhood. So I probably talked too much, but I got excited. So, um, so that's, that's where I am with, with the hope that, with the understanding that A Hands are the experts and they know exactly what they're doing. And that includes ensuring that people's properties aren't, aren't approached upon. And that is incumbent on us, too, right? As, you know, with our policing department and, and all those things. So that's, I guess that's what I had to say. I got a little bit excited, but I can't help it. Okay, questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Okay, motion carried. And, and, and I do want to say this. A Hands is both on the screen. And Mr. Graham, thank you so much for coming and, and answering questions, too. They've heard everything. And I, and I know that because they have to take everything into consideration. So I, I appreciate that from everyone. Okay. Starlight. Did you want to take that one? Because you're tourism, this is a tourism thing.
It kind of is. Thank you, your worship. Uh, Tim Doucet, as you may remember, came and made a presentation. And as part of that presentation, he had a request and it was a monetary request. And the situation that he has is, um, he requires recertification every four years for the Acadian Skies and Migma Lands tourist destination Starlight. It, it costs, uh, I believe I have the information here somewhere. It's about $10,000 in Canadian dollars. It's actually $7,000 in euros that you have to pay it in. But he had a request for us to give $4,000 to that. The request wasn't just ours. He actually has $5,000 confirmed from the municipality of Clare and asks out in different areas. And because of the implications of this, now, I know we normally do grants at a couple of times of year, but this particular one has so many implications when it comes to tourism that I would very much like to make the motion, and I will make it right now, that we grant that funding request of $4,000 in order for him to certify, uh, for the Acadian Skies and Migma Lands tourist destination. And it's for his, uh, Starlight designation. So that's my motion.
Okay. Councillor Dares?
Yeah, I'll second the motion. And, uh, I'd like to offer that, um, that number one, let's point out that this is a, a recertification for four years. So it's $4,000 from, from. Five, I believe it's four.
Four.
Oh, four? Oh, sorry.
So it, it.
You just saved a thousand bucks.
It does work out to be a thousand dollars a year that the town would be, would be contributing. And secondly, this isn't a grant to organizations. This is us purchasing certification for our area. So I think it's a whole different thing than, uh, than the regular grants to organizations. So I'm prepared to support the motion.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a first or a second or yes? Okay, you good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Tender results, 2022, 23 snow clearing and removal that council award the tender for 22 and 23 snow clearing and removal to K Anthony Landscaping and Snow Removal as recommended by the manager of Public Works. Okay, moved by councillor Heather, seconded by deputy mayor. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, reports. Council Advisory Committee, that's you there, deputy?
Recommended motion that councillor Bell be appointed to the Police Advisory Board to replace deputy mayor Berry.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded by councillor Cleveland. Any discussion on that one? You're still good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council host the reception and celebration of the Community in Bloom National Awards.
Seconded by councillor Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council defer the Meadowfield School Playground Request to a future meeting.
So moved. Seconded by councillor Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council plan a staff Christmas party.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Cleveland. Any discussion? I guess I'll say this. December what? So we'll get you a note of, but, but December 7th. And we just, um, we just kind of said, won't be like a sit-down dinner and stuff like that. So we're probably gonna go bowling and have all kinds of food around. I might even chuck in an ugly Christmas sweater. I might, for some prizes. But, um, high time that, that, um, staff were able to get together and, and relax. And, uh, so if this goes forward, Lindsay and I have kind of got it under control. And by Lindsay and I, I mean Lindsay. We've got this under control. She just keeps saying, what do you want, what do you want to do? What do you want to do? Okay, councillor Bow.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I just, uh, I just, uh, I want to be, I want council and to be cognizant just of the fact that, um, the chief officer of public health and the director of the IWK today, spoke to Nova Scotians urging them to use caution and to say, and to practice safe practices over the next four to eight weeks because the health system in this province is in a state of emergency. So, um, none of us have to forego, none of us have to forego the things that we enjoy. But I, I do think it's important to show leadership. So I, I am, I'm hoping that when we convene for a staff party this year that we will keep in mind the recommendations that have been clearly laid out by the public, you know, the public health officer. And, and, and be mindful that our decisions affect others. And in this case, there are little babies that are struggling to breathe. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll say this to that because I, I think you probably listened just, and I listened after because Dr. Strang was on. And he was reiterating that, uh, he was reiterating that and gave us, you know, this is, this is what we need to do. So, um, Lindsay, maybe before, because we're gonna do a letter and we're going to say, this is, this is what this evening will look like. And, um, councillor, I think we just put it in there. I, I think that it, it can be clearly spelled out and it should be. And, and we just put it in there and say, this is, and write down to, you know what? If you even got a sniffle, don't bother coming. Because it's, this is other people, right? So, but I'll, I'll talk to you about, if you can get a little list for me and we'll put that together. It's, we need to do it. We need to do it. Okay? All right? Any other discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
Uh, the recommended motion that council engage with the invasive species council for a plan to eradicate the Himalayan blackberry.
Okay. Seconded by councillor Dares. Any discussion on this one? We've got correspondence on that. Yeah, good. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council engage with the invasive species council for a plan to eradicate Tanzu ragwort.
Okay, they got ugly names, haven't they?
Second, here it caught herself.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Okay, Citizen Advisory Committee's planning. So that would be you there. Councillor?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, first, recommended motion that council approve first reading to an MPS amendment to change the boundaries of the industrial designation and rezone two lots on Water Street from waterfront industrial M2 to medium-density residential R2. And I should emphasize again that this first reading would lead to a, another public hearing here.
Okay. So moved, seconded by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve first reading to MPS LUB amendments to include provisions related to transitional and supportive housing by development agreement. And the applicant is the Juniper House.
Okay. Do you want to second that? Okay, seconded by councillor Bow. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve first reading to municipal planning strategy and, excuse me, land use bylaw, housekeeping amendments related to development agreements and site plan approvals.
I have a second over that one. Seconded by deputy. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. Okay. Number two, Dear Management Strategy Working Group, that's you councillor Dares.
And after discussion with, uh, your worship today, I'd like to amend that motion to read that we send a letter. This is a motion, by the way, that came from the Dear Management Group. In recognizing that there are other provinces such as British Columbia and New Brunswick where the province is undertaken to take some responsibility, noting that, uh, there's more than one community in the province that is suffering from the, the same problem. So we, uh, would like to send a letter to the province requesting them, uh, to, to support, uh, dear management throughout the province. And I don't know what that looks like, whether it includes funding or if it's just setting up a, a provincial board. But, uh, I think the province has to undertake some responsibility.
Okay. Moved, seconded by deputy. Discussion on this one? It, it was, it, it says in here it was gonna go to NSFM. And I, I just want folks to know that, uh, NS, NSFM has priorities and resolutions. And you have to kind of make your way onto that list because they, there's just so many things. But councillor Dares is right. It, it affects everybody. So, um, when I, I just reached out to their CEO this afternoon and this evening. She, she said that we're right to send it to the province, but we will copy them. So we'll copy NSFM and NSFM will speak to it at meetings at every opportunity they get. And they're in the room with a lot of ministers and.
Yeah, so just as way of explanation, in the other provinces, the, uh, the issue was addressed through their municipal associations. So that's why.
Oh, absolutely.
So thank you.
We always find a way. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Public Transit Advisory, that's you there, deputy?
I'm thankful to say that the committee met for the first time about a month ago. And, uh, this was on the agenda. And the recommended motion is that council approve applying in the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program to support the procurement of two new transit buses. And that if the ICIP application is successful, that the town of Yarmouth A commits to municipal contribution for the outline project of 26.67% in the amount of $112,014. And B, commits to covering any potential contingency cost estimated at maximum $80,000.
Okay.
So the discussion that took place is obviously the, the transits that we have now are coming to their life's end. And, um, thankfully, there's a program that may allow us to only have to pay a small percentage to get two new buses, so.
Love it. Okay. Did you second that councillor Cleveland?
I did.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Okay. Let's all hold hands and hope that we get, that we get that money. Go ahead councillor Bow.
I just wanted to point out that in our discussions, uh, the transit meeting, uh, staff suggested strongly that, because we asked about, uh, gas versus electric. And while it does not appear that it is, um, fiscally possible in this, uh, in this go-around, they did expect that this is going to be the last gas vehicle that they'll be buying for the transit authority. So the future is coming.
Future's coming. Thank you. Thank you both. The, the future's coming. I guess the other thing is I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have to pay for it. Right? Wouldn't want to have to pay to fix an electric bus this week, but in a couple of years. Go ahead councillor Dares.
Um, yeah, just coming out of the Accessibility Committee, I know that it was spoken. The buses that we have now are accessible insofar as wheelchair accessible. But, um, the suggestion was that perhaps, uh, those with vision, impaired vision, that if, if it's at all possible, uh, like some of the, um, city buses that you'd find in other jurisdictions, if there's a, a way to have a pre-recorded or a button that the driver can push to let you know which stop that you're coming up on, so that those with vision issues, uh, will, will know that this is their stop. Anyway, it's just something that, to be considered if, if at all possible.
Did you hear that one? Do you want to, can you just say that again? Because he'll. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I knew that.
She's got it. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Yeah, yeah. There's, there's just some little bells and whistles that we think are bells and whistles until we're in that position, right? And then you really, they're really important. Go ahead deputy.
It's great because that's exactly why this committee has kind of been brought forward, that these small, well, we shouldn't say small things. These issues can be discussed and brought up and, you know, be proactive in this. So I'm really glad things are kind of here and, you know, getting some comments from seniors and different people from the public of kind of what they like to see and whatnot. So I'm glad that we're kind of rolling with this committee.
It's, um, it's really cool, too, how all the, how all the committees converge. Like, you can't get a bus unless we talk with the Accessibility Committee because it's important to, it's just really neat. Did you want to share something there, Mr. Planner?
As, well, I wrote the application for this, so. Just to clarify, like, so the accessibility components are part of the funding application. And they've already been in discussion with the province. So it's not just about being, the bus itself being wheelchair accessible. It's about visual and audio cues as well. So.
This is so good. We're so glad you're our planner.
This week.
Tease. We shouldn't be teasing you like that. See how much we can get done the next week.[1790.42]
Man, you gotta work your butt off.
Put your seatbelt on, Tony. Okay, um, so did we vote on that one? Well, we'll vote on it for you deputy, just to give you permission. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay? Get her done. We can't waste Tony's, uh, application. Okay? Uh, reports for information attached. Question for committee chairs. You, did you handle that one, or did you have a?
Yes, your worship, with your indulgence, um, there's an issue that, that has arisen at the, uh, Solid Waste Park that probably should be, um, made, there should be public awareness. And so what, what's happened is approximately a year ago, the general manager, um, identified an issue with people that were salvaging items from the, um, from the wood pile and the metal pile, and, uh, he was concerned about liability, and rightly so. Um, it led to, uh, by way of motion, us engaging a consultant to do a risk management assessment at, at the, the site, and that report is complete, and it supports, um, that there should not be allowed any, um, salvaging of, uh, in other words, people shouldn't be able to pick through the wood pile because of the liability issue. And it also identified, we were glad we did it because it also identified that we need a, uh, some detectors in the transfer station, uh, both heat and smoke. Um, and that's because people are throwing batteries in the, in the garbage. Um, but by way of motion, we directed that, uh, no longer allow people to remove things from the landfill site. Having said that, it's our desire to remove as many materials as possible for reuse and rather than let them go into the waste stream. So we, uh, following the, uh, the AGM in September, uh, we started discussions about having, uh, a reuse store at the park where, um, items that were considered of some value, such as, um, wood products, um, uh, it's amazing the number of things that people bring out there. I mean, there's working lawn mowers that people drop off that could be used somewhere else. So we, we discussed having a store where these items could be retrieved by staff and placed in a storage building, um, and sold back to, at a small fee, a significantly reduced fee, uh, sold back to, you could drop in, and if you saw something you needed or liked, um, you could pay a small fee and take it away. Uh, it gets it out of the waste stream. There are some logistical issues about how would, how do we measure how much, um, product we're diverting, so, because we need the diversion credit to help pay for it. So there is some logistical things about it, but some of the, uh, the options too is that are we going to pay higher staff to, to run this, or would we offer it up to community groups as, uh, you know, come in once a month, once a week on Saturday and offer it to different groups to come in and actually man the, the store and, uh, and keep the, the money that's collected, uh, which, you know, which might be a, a good, a really nice pub thing to do for the public. Bottom line is, it keeps it out of the waste stream, and that's where we're going for. Uh, the reason that it's, um, so by way of motion at the most recent meeting, uh, we are exploring, uh, the costs, um, we are, uh, leaning on the, uh, support from Dustin Newell, who's the, the grant application, uh, gentleman that the town recently hired, uh, with CAO's permission, he's going to be doing some research for us to see if there are any grants out there because we have to build a building. Uh, but it received, um, unanimous support at the, at the most recent meeting, and it's also be, received, uh, support at the Waste Check meeting. The reason I think it needs to be out there is I want the public to know that we are doing something. Uh, there was recently an incident at the park where somebody, uh, retrieved an item from the pile, uh, attempted to leave the park with it, but there's a, it's, it's kind of a, if we let one person do it, we have to let everybody do it. So we shut it down. And we shut it down because it's a risk, and, uh, it's not a risk that we're willing to accept, and the consultant has told us that it's not a, a risk that we should accept. But the gentleman, uh, was removing the item from the park, um, he was challenged at the station, and the item was removed from his vehicle. Um, he returned about an hour later and, um, made apologies to the, the staff person, um, and then proceeded to grab the item and put it on his truck and leave. So, um, but we want people to know, it's not about, um, it's about safety of the public. And it's not about trying to, we are looking at exploring efforts, we, we're making progress, we're, we're looking at a way to get these items back into the hands of people that could use them. It won't happen overnight, but I know that, I just want people to know that there's full support at the Waste Park Board, and there's full support from Waste Check. And, uh, I think it's, uh, it's going to be, um, I think it's gonna be a really nice, um, a nice to-do thing. Um, it's the right thing to do, um, and it's an idea whose time has come, and, uh, it's never too late to do the right thing. So that's what we're, that's what we're planning.
That's awesome. I think that's great, and, and I remember during COVID, like, we just had, we had to say, oh, you just, you can't go in. So I'm glad it was taken, taken further, and that's, that's really-
Well, I mean, the high-level discussions have taken place over the past year, but we're finally, you know, gonna put some, uh, some meat on the bones.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Good stuff. Go ahead there councillor. Deputy?
I was contacted by that person who did come get the chair, and I did write an email to Chad, and, uh, I hadn't received, um, contact back from Glendon, but I'm glad to hear that it made its way and that things are working out, and I love the idea of the store and the possibility that, you know, local organizations could come. So sometimes through, you know, small problems, big solutions come through. So kudos to you and the group out there. I hope that works itself out. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay, um, questions? Any more questions for committee chairs? Does anybody have anything they want to ask, or? Go ahead there councillor.
Well, there's something I'm kind of happy to announce that everybody already knows about anyway, and that is the fact that, uh, the town of Yarmouth next year will be hosting Nova Scotia Music Week. And, uh, that money, of course, it was, we, we put money into that, but, uh, we're pretty excited about that. And, uh, uh, the, uh, the assembly of the committee is being put together now, uh, so that's, that's going to be, as you know, because we have hosted it in the past, it's gonna be pretty exciting. And on top of that, there's something I wanted to mention that I, I want you all to wish, to, uh, kind of look for when it, when it starts coming together, and it's kind of a, a shameless, uh, plug, I suppose. But to me, when it came to musicians in Nova Scotia Music Week, bringing, bringing all those musicians, those very talented musicians from all over Nova Scotia here, it, it is, it's wonderful. We have our own very, very talented musicians. And particularly just lately with, uh, other things I've been doing, kind of, there's been a focus in my mind towards youth. And so look over the next probably few months, because I, I plan to try to put together with the help of Nova Scotia Music, uh, Music Nova Scotia, uh, who does this, um, some programs for youth to come in, learn how to apply for showcases, and I'm hoping to organize not only our own youth showcase Yarmouth-based, uh, during Nova Scotia Music Week, but also perhaps, uh, through the, uh, the summertime, maybe we can bring back, uh, the, uh, the concerts we used to do at, at, uh, at the park, at Frost Park, and, uh, enable these musicians to kind of get a chance to get out and, and play in public. So there's some real opportunities there, and I'm going to be working on that over the next couple of months actually to get it all organized.
Good stuff. And we've got, um, we've got curling coming.
We sure do. We have the, uh, National Seniors Mixed Curling Championships, which are coming in December. Um, this is gonna be a heck of a, this already has, but, you know, you always talk when it comes to tourism about expanding your seasons and creating opportunities in the shoulder seasons. And most people think of, of tourism season here pretty much as ending in September. And here we are talking about events in November for next year, um, and of course, we have the big one in December here with the, with the curling. There's a lot of excitement here, and, uh, it, it's a lot of work from a lot of avenues. Not the least of which is the town, who has made it very open and made the facilities here able to have this happen. But there's so much volunteerism in this community as well, and we're so good at doing this, at doing these events and making others feel welcome. Look at what we did with TMAC, uh, in, in June, uh, the, uh, Travel Media Association of Canada. So we really have something to build on significantly. And now that we're starting to get through, and I know that, you know, there's, there's still COVID out there, but we're, that we're starting to get over a hump, um, there's some exciting times to come. Thank you.
Awesome. Anybody else need to share anything, or want to share anything? We're good? Okay. Um, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm doing, doing my best, uh, with Lindsay's help, and I know the deputy said that he would help. We, we've got to in some shape or form get the Hundred Meals back up and, and running, uh, especially, and it's, it's a community meal, we've always said that, but especially now, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a tough winter. I mean, we had to fight through a hailstorm to get here, right? But it's gonna be, it's going to be a tough winter with fuel costs and food costs and everything else. Uh, so we're, we're gonna do our best to get that up and running, and it may not look exactly like it has. We did, um, two years with a Hundred Meals, um, a hu, a meal a day for a Hundred Meals in a row. Like, I remember, um, Bell and her team having to shovel at the Knights of Columbus on Saturday morning, like to shovel, really shovel, like not six inches, just to get in there. Uh, and that was the commitment that we had. So I'm gonna start putting more stuff out on, on social media. We've, uh, Lindsay's reached out to a number of the venues, uh, community groups, and we're gonna see what they say. Um, I'll probably ask you if, if you're okay with doing maybe a meal or two as council. We, we kind of, uh, I guess everybody wasn't on council then, but we had some fun. We had some fun. Um, it's just great to be able to, to serve in that way, so I just want you to be aware of that, and we'll get, um, we'll get that information out. Okay? Um, under, are we good on, go ahead there deputy. Sorry. Somebody else have a light on? No? That's you. Okay, go ahead.
Um, just thinking to further what Wade said about, uh, shout out, I guess, to Neil McKenzie and the job that they do at YASTA. I found through COVID, they were one of the organizations that when other people were kind of slacking back, they stepped up and just kept the, you know, kept grinding, and, um, they are nominated for a national award, I seen the other day, so just want to give them their due. And, uh, actually, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter of congratulations to them for the work that they've done in the national award that they're, um, nominated for.
Wonderful. Second, everybody seconded that, just for the record. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Good stuff. We good? Okay. And the only addition there was, I'm looking for a motion, uh, that council ratify the IAFF collective agreement as discussed in camera. Okay, councillor Dares, seconded by councillor Bell. All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Uh, date of next meeting is December the 8th, night after our Christmas party.